...for order, it is now fix 74. We will now call for order. If you will, please stay on call at 8:00. We will end the session. Please remain standing while we have the president speak to the U.S. Department of Defense.
I pray that the citizens be united in their safety and power. If they want to be free, they will be safe. For my nation, under God, we will live well, we will redeem the justice of God. I am not a justice of God. I pray that the citizens be united, Texas, and we say, under God, one and equal.
Thank you. You may proceed. I have the fixed emotions. I have a lot to announce. We have one account on the news, a missing car. Uh, we take an account on news, a missing. But he's a brand new father of a healthy girl. So, congratulations, that boy, I'm a little bit baby. Mitch, I'd like to open a public hearing and this is conduct a public hearing regarding your request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Austin County of Grayson State of Texas, being described as called because the block 16 law and next to 55th and 90th Avenue currently sound similar, single-family resident or district, two, single-family, two for variance to the Van Austin Board of Organizers, section 4673, D, height and area, regulations, 4695 area, setback, high and coverage, regulations, to reduce the minimum building size and setback requirements. Are there any questions regarding this? Second call for questions regarding this.
Mayor, if I know, um, we need the applicant to tell us what setbacks and minimum building size they're asking for, so that the public would they know if there's a, um, measurements they would want to speak to.
Mr. Pierce, do you please pass? Is it 4.7 for rear and 2.5 for side yard? Okay, thank you. No questions? Now I can finally call for questions. Number 16, number five. Conduct a public hearing regarding your request by the owner agent of the property, situated in the city of Van Austin County of Grayson State of Texas, being described as years from the line of this in block four, who are at 1 and 2, 150 and 756 North Avenue, a variant of this to the Van Austin Board of Organizers, section 4692, height and area regulation, and section 4695 area, setback, high and coverage, regulations, to reduce the minimum building size. This separate property is currently found in a single-family residence, district 1, FS1. This was the move of Scott Meebey, who is not in town. But if you have any questions, then transfer to the next one. So at this time, are there any questions regarding this?
Mayor, for the record, the reduction in building size is to reduce the minimum size for each unit, thirty to fourteen hundred thirty.
Thank you. Second call for questions. Thirdly, final call. At this time, I will call for a public hearing. We will open with the question. These two require vice bar for supermacgazi. A supermacgazi needs to be more than four sets of legs for its parents. To manage the only child, four children members. If our son might be alive again, lessons to teach, to defend, it's no problem. So, Mr. Pierce, this has decided even after earlier incentives to the county manager. So counsel, consider and take any action necessary regarding your request by the owner agent of the property, situated in the city of Van Austin County of Texas, section 65, being described as called because the block 16, line and next to 55th and 90th Avenue, two, FS2, for a variance to the Van Austin Board of Organizers, section 4697, three feet, and early regulations, and 4695 area, setback, and coverage regulations, to reduce the minimum building size and setback requirements. Are there any questions from counsel? The only questions from counsel is for a motion at this time. We have a motion, is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Abstain?
Ah. Down here.
You have abstained?
No, I haven't, no.
Again. Three, okay. Okay, this has failed, Mr. Pierce. If you will, submit this to the public hearing, have the man who makes the decision, I believe the county.
It's not over that.
For the guy. Abstain, I understand. The next item is item seven. This item was submitted by Mr. Scott Meebey. And so I would give him, Mr. Pierce, the optimism that when he wants to present this to our other member of the council, and he really is wanting to apply that consideration, uh, he is, I'm going to discuss if the points are tabled for a special trial committee. There's a motion, a see here. We have a motion, this is a second. We have a motion and a second. I believe this only requires a majority, except for.
Yes.
Yes, if there are any questions. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Do you think?
I apologize. Not sure what you're calling for.
For number seven to be tabled. Okay, we have a motion, a second, and three counsel members who have voted to table it. Are you opposed?
I am fine, I say I'm not.
We have a call. So at this time, we will adjourn. And so we go to the question. Number 645. Now we must call our youngest city councilman. The meeting of the Van Austin City Council will come to order, it is now 6:45. The first item on the agenda is citizen community attention. We have no citizen community attention at this time. So the next. Uh, number three, presentation of the police department officer of the year for 2017, and we call forward Keith Fox.
Mayor Prokian, counsel, thank you. I'd like to present the officer of the year for 2017, Mary Ann Jones. Mary Ann is very dedicated and brave, and she always puts the community first, and very pleased to give her this award for the 2017 year, year of 2017.
The next thing that we have is number four, presentation of a proclamation for sexual assault awareness month, which is April 2018, on the last week night. Please come forward. This is the sexual assault awareness month, where as the month of April 2018, is recognized as sexual assault awareness month, and whereas all of the community organizations, such as the Crisis Center, have pledged to educate and support their communities regarding the devastating effects of sexual assault. And whereas, one in five women and one in twenty men will experience sexual assault in their lifetime, and whereas, community involvement is necessary to end sexual assault. The Crisis Center and the city of Van Austin recognize the difficulties victims have from reporting sexual assault, and whereas, the Grayson Crisis Center has responded to over 100 sexual assault calls since the inception of the Sexual Assault Response Team on October the 1st. And whereas, all are encouraged to contact the Grayson Crisis Center at 903-893-3909, or the 24-hour hotline at 903-893-56151. And whereas, community partners include the city of Van Austin, the Van Austin Police Department, other local law enforcement, area hospitals, and organizations. The Crisis Center and the city of Van Austin recognize the dedication of these organizations to end sexual assault in Grayson County. Therefore, be it resolved, that I, Kevin L. Salmon, Mayor Prokian, and the city of Van Austin, dites hereby proclaim the month of April 2018 a sexual assault awareness month in the city of Van Austin, and personally want to thank you for your wonderful work.
Thank you all, it's very much. We have, we have been looking for new sexual assault programs, not that we are along this level, too. And we just kind of remind everybody we have a special program this year, that we have working on, and that's something with the system that we do very regularly, so our community can, um, have a good time over there. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, I'm going to do without a microphone, because I believe I think I've said. And it is a presentation of a proclamation for members of the Van Austin High School Powerlifting Team. Please come forward, Alicia Hill and Lynn Tyson.
Whereas, it has been brought to the attention of the city of Van Austin, that Alicia Hill, Lynn Tyson, and Lynn, Lynn Tyson, who did not leave this tonight, about their Van Austin High School students, they exhibit astounding athletic ability, which have earned their recognition on the league award. And whereas, as a member of the ladies Panther Powerlifting Team at Van Austin High School, they have been named Texas State High School Women's Powerlifting Association Champion in Class 3A, and, uh, in 19, 2017, and 2018. Most recently, at 132 pounds, Alicia has a total weight of 930 pounds. Whereas, she has set a new state of Texas record in her weight class with overall total weight of 930 pounds, and her deadlift weight is 375 pounds, and that's small to say. Now, therefore, I, Kevin L. Salmon, Mayor Prokian, for the city of Van Austin, by the authority vested in me, do hereby, on behalf of the citizens of Van Austin, extend congratulations and best wishes to both of you, Alicia Hill and Lynn Tyson, for seeing the standards with hard work and dedication and athletes, and I, testimony, in testimony they're aware of, I will here, unto, sit my hand and pause for the seal of city of Van Austin, on this fifth day, like. She is always wonderful. She has to go back to the road. She is already at work and can't sit down, but we started a point, I would say, you know, how you look. Did allow her to leave and come to town to get her own award, so I thought that was very nice.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, it is now 6:51. I call the public hearing to order. It's conduct a public hearing regarding your request by the owner agent for a change in zoning of approximately 136.1 acre tract of land to amend the current plan, development standards set forth in order number 646. The property is described as G-0454 Gibson L., A-G-0454, acres 27.12, and G-0953 Paxton Thomas, A-G-0953 acres 109.0, located at the northwest corner of, of West Van Austin Parkway, which is also parking off at 121, and the Jim Jones Road. Tonight, we have, I'm going to describe, Tony Crowe, who would like to do his field out of form, and would like to speak to the council and the public regarding the Thompson project. Mr. Pierce.
City of the mayor of Kansas City, we have 70,000 people down in the city of Kansas City, 25,000 people, and we come to hear the project of killing the children and managers, and here to interview the person who I have, and now we're in the first half of the process, and we also have what we believe is a conversation, so.
Since this is a public hearing, you do not have to go out of house to speak at a public hearing, so if you have any questions that we would like to address, Mr. Pierce, are there any at this time? Would you please bring the drawing board?
This is the, this is a project that I've already had to do some, uh, the next of what we're doing is finding a better board, a permanent position, a vertical strength, that will really let us, in this feeling, we got online, we tell them, we do, uh, find the first place, uh, the market, uh, and, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, we, uh, probably all, we're going to all, uh, uh.
Thank you very much. Second call, are there any questions regarding this? Thirdly, final call. I declare this public hearing closed. The next to item on the agenda, consent agendas, items that are listed on the consent agenda, and all be approved together without discussion or individual motion. Uh, number seven, consider and take any act necessary regarding minutes from March 14, 2018, regular meeting of the March 17, and the March 17, 2018, public call meeting. Number eight, consider and take any act necessary regarding approval of an ordinance in any sector of the Board of Organizers to authorize the city energy to reduce fees contained in the fee schedule, and the best gift is to the city of Van Austin, and best made in the technology, start for POC, or by the city manager. Number nine, consider and take any act necessary regarding authorization of the mayor, Prokian, the sale agreement with Mexico, death center, by the provision of non-emergency annual express service, ensuring the city receives payment for all services handed. And number ten, is consider and take any act necessary regarding the warning contract by the Bison Gate Avenue and related draft construction project in the amount of 1,158,939 dollars in aid to Cape Town Services Incorporated. Is there a motion in front of the council, at this time, to approve these items? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Suzanne?
I.
Abstain? Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, now I see your hand. These are pretty unanimous, lady. Thank you. Now we will move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is consider and take any act necessary regarding approximately 136.1 acre tract of land to adopt an order that's amended to current plan, development standard, set forth in order number 626. The property is described as G-0454 Gibson L., A-G-0454, acres 27.12, and B-G-0953 Paxton Thomas, A-Z-O953 acres 109-G, we'll look at it from the northwest corner of the Van Austin Parkway, on the north at 121, with Jim Jones Road. Is there a motion from counsel at this time? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion concerning the building this? I will, uh, no further discussion, I will make the focus, please raise your hand. I've got it, it's, uh, thank you, very, very, very. Next, we have, uh, item four, consider and take any act necessary regarding authorization of the mayor, Prokian, to execute documents necessary to purchase an ambulance and equipment for the U.N. Fire Department in an amount of 275,000 dollars. Exactly. Now, at 2:50, 10:00.
Mayor Prokian, counsel, would you, uh, I threw away, uh, the purchase of a new ambulance in the district, in my two, uh, to replace our backup medic, Medic 142, uh, which is considered, uh, it's life by a large margin. This ambulance was never purchased, we were entirely needed this ambulance last year. As you can see, Medic 142, it's a 2007 F-350 with almost 300,000 miles on it. It's been stopped constantly from maintenance, since, uh, since 2014 to 2000, you know, from 2014 to 2017, we spent roughly 43,215 dollars to replace it. It's unsafe for personnel, it's unsafe for the citizens, for the community, and many of the rest of the city. I personally witnessed an ambulance break down probably at least 10 times while we were responding to a call, and putting the patient for trying to return to service after the emergency. If our system had to do extremely, uh, we need to replace this ambulance as soon as possible, uh, by the end of this, it would reduce the risk, uh, and help the fire department maintain resources that it needs to provide adequate services for the city. When purchasing a new ambulance, it's a lot of equipment, uh, we take into consideration for any ambulance, uh, new heart monitor, the figureader, uh, a power cord stretcher, stair chair, and, uh, an extra patient tool for extra heavy patients in the vehicles. The reason we have these listed, uh, to purchase with the new ambulance is because the ones we have are spinning out of it. For example, uh, the heart monitor and the figureader we have on Medic 142 right now, uh, it's low pack clothes, they've stopped manufacturing that, they've stopped making parts for it, and I don't think it's safe for the city. Uh, that's probably our, probably our most valuable tool of any ambulance. Power cord stretcher, uh, we got adequate, uh, going to transport to new patients, uh, stair chair, uh, it's a better tool to get patients downstairs without personnel hurting themselves and reducing the risk of, uh, calling the next year. And, uh, extra patient tools, perhaps heavy patients from a vehicle, that's, uh, that's mine. When, uh, trying to figure out the cost of the ambulance, along with the equipment, uh, we reached out and obtained several quotes, that's how we came up with the price, and then we got in touch with Marissa from government castle, and, uh, she provided us with a financial proposal, which I have provided to y'all. And, uh, I'm open to the discussion.
How will this affect this, this entity?
This would not affect the issue of budget, this, uh, the payments would be deferred to FY 2019. So, uh, payments would begin on October 15, 2019.
Are there any questions before, uh? Thank you, great question, counsel. So we have Adam Player. Uh, the counsel has no questions, please go ahead and make your at this time.
Mayor, I think the first.
Okay. Well, thank you Suzanne, we have asked for our second. We have a motion and a second, are there any questions from counsel? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Or say something Suzanne, thank you. Unanimous, thank you. Number 13, consider and take any act necessary regarding adopting a resolution to authorize the mayor, Prokian, to execute an agreement to finance the purchase of an ambulance and equipment for the EMS fire department with government capital before it's to the amount of 275,000 dollars, as authorized by item twelve above. Are there any questions from counsel? Is there a motion? Just outside the head. We have a motion and a second, are there any? Just outside the head. We have a motion and a second. Are there any more questions from council? All those in favor, favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the interim city manager's report. Steve Jones?
Good evening, the council and the mayor. I would first like to thank the council for allowing me the opportunity to continue to serve at Van Austin. I am enjoying the many fine people I meet in here with the community, business owners, developers, citizens and staff, all of them helping in my building and understanding of what a great community Van Austin is today and will be as we move into the future. As the attached accounting and my time falls out in the implosion, I have not been sitting idle, and my daily calendar of appointments has been full and remains very busy. I've made it a point to get out of my office, to attend as many meetings as possible on location so I can see facilities and meet those who are doing the work. I've also made time to visit many businesses, owners and operators, and my goal is to meet most, if not all downtown business owners, for the next few days and then expand my circle of visits out as time for next. All are giving my business partner an offer of help when needed. In closing, as a central philosophy, the needs of those citizens must be a top priority as a government agency, and this must be conveyed with every interaction the city employs has with the citizens of Van Austin. I'll be working to create that culture and promote the philosophy. I thought I might review a few of my former accomplishments right now since March thirteenth, our last council meeting. I completed my department head city tours, having traveled the city with public works. I think I said this once before, looking down at the ground, and the fire department, and the police chief, so I have very individual perspectives of our city, how it operates, where strengths are, and where they see our weaknesses due. All are very good folks, we're very blessed with a complement of people to my right. I've met with a central appraisal district, that's something that I enjoyed on a personal level, but on a professional level, it was very educational. I gained a wealth of information on the city of Van Austin and our growing property values. I've met with several council members, had dinner with our city engineer and our city attorney, I've talked in shop talk over pasta, and met several potential business owners seeking to open up shop in Van Austin. I've met with a web developer, Charlie Williams, our former school superintendent, Eric Clark, our medical insurance director for the city. I've met with the management manager in his office so he can continue to pound into me the work that you guys and discuss walking and bike path projects that's getting ready to move forward, discuss road projects, emotional development and infrastructure. I've attended board meetings of the CDC, EDC, Chamber, Library Board, planning and zoning, and planning passports. I don't think I missed any. I've called and interviewed myself to the superintendent of schools. I've attended meet the candidates. I've met with two commercial real estate developers to hear about the central projects. I conducted a rockabout of downtown. Anybody whose doors I'm on, I pull it open. I conducted kickoff meetings with our latest audit firm, conducting audits of our existing procedures. I'm very excited to get that completed. And I'll start the process of meeting with individuals, department heads, and people to review individual department, view the day projects, and opening up discussions on time and future.
Thank you. After me, before time, I can send you a phone about the DM. Thank you. Our next question, if you have any questions, go ahead and say it.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do want to mention that in March, on March second, I did participate in the Read Across America Day honoring Dr. Seuss and read to Ms. Akoski's third grade class at the elementary school. We have continued preparations for the May fifth general and special election. And just as a reminder, early voting will be at Grayson College South Campus here in Van Austin, April twenty-third through twenty-seventh from eight AM to five PM, and then April thirtieth through May first from seven AM to seven PM, and on Election Day, May fifth from seven AM to seven PM. We have a new utility building for her, her name is Tiffany McDaniel, so please stop in and say hi. And then I also wanted to thank the EDC executive director and the board of directors for inviting me to attend their meeting on March twenty-third and presented information regarding the city's primary process. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Fines?
Mayor pro temp, council. April the twenty-eighth, we're taking in unused and expired prescription medication here at the police department on a Saturday, and one PM, the four PM. And also I'd like to recognize Shannon Haynes, which is one of our telecommunications officers. She has received her master's telecommunications from Texas Department of Law enforcement, which is a biggest conference in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Johnson?
Mayor pro temp, council. I'd like to remind everybody that we're still continuing to work with the red draft, providing free smoke patches for the citizens and the community. So if you know anybody that needs smoke patches, please ask them and see if we can be able to help out. I'd also like to add a mostly long-term educational presentation regarding disaster preparedness to the senior
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. Our voting count, when I put seventeen percent last night for March, with a total of sixteen hundred and seventy more people coming for our doors, they resulted in a increase of nineteen percent in our circulation and two thousand one hundred and seventy-two items circulate. We had a couple of record-setting storytimes, which resulted in a sixty-two percent increase in attendance in storytimes, one hundred and thirty-eight children and about eighty-one adults attending in March. Fourteen council meetings with twenty-seventeen's attending. I would like to let everybody know that who is not aware that this week, Sunday through Saturday, is National Library and take the opportunity to draw your attention to some of the new services that our library offer. It's being celebrated across the nation this week, April eighth, eighth through fourteen. The technology for business needs, job seekers and students of all ages, we have public wifi, high-speed internet access, audio editing software, Google Pro Earth, scanning documents to pictures, faxing, printing in black and white or color, PowerPoint, Excel, Access, Publisher, Microsoft Word, photo editing software as well. We offer bestselling fiction and nonfiction, the items in books for adults, teens and children, and offer programming for each age group as well. We have a large collection of DVDs for children and adults with our collection standing at just over eleven hundred items, and these are popular items too. We have the Dallas Morning News, the Herald Democrat, the Van Austin Leader, and the leader is on microphone all the way back to the eighteen hundreds. The library exists to educate and enrich your life, and we encourage everybody to come over and use it. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Fines, Public Works?
Honorable mayor, hope to have you. City council. Public Works is still working with Jeff Whitmire of the Grayson County Road Crew, working on South Dallas, on West Orphan and in the valley, and Austin may shake and run it up right now in the war ground. It's gonna run it for a couple more weeks and then put the pot mix on top of it and then hold it. Shouldn't say it on top of it.
Yeah, is that on Dallas Street?
Dallas Street. Public Works contractor has finished striking downtown. The contractors are working on fixed dock drainage issue right now, and we are taking water and sure and they are doing mighty first. And that's all I have, other than the fact that the city crews will be here in part over the month.
Thank you. Strapping down here looks very nice. I have a list that has some hidden particles being prepared. I'll park it in second. I know this today. That's all. Next, the members, do you have anything to add to the audience?
This is the mayor and council. A few things going on. The Parks Department and the Parks Master Plan held revisioning session last week. The survey, the citizen survey will be online in the next week or so. We're looking for everybody's input on their priorities in parks, whether it's fields, activities, dog parks, trails, whatever it is. We're gonna have it out there. On the development side, Sanford Park is about ready to start their taking, which is the last segment of their graywood heights face three, across Graywood Drive from Sanford, is submitted their breaking plans today. They are gonna start moving dirt in the next week or two. And as you approve the Graywood and Wesson game projects tonight, that contract will be starting in the next thirty days also. So we're gonna have three major contractors, Ty, Jason, Lang, and Ben, for that new school to open. Georgetown Four, which is the Stone Hollow Phase Two, is ending in the next thirty days. It should be turning dirt. And the gentleman here, that you approved the Thompson zoning contract, I understand by the end of summer, we will be under construction. So we want a lot of the dialogue coming forward.
Thank you, Ben. You have spoken a couple of minutes. Suzanne, do you have any comments before we end the budget?
Well, hello.
Uh, the video player, you see everybody, um, this is March, this is the WU, uh, see, or I think you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not, you're not over there. So, I think it's short, the sound, I think we have, uh, that they are, uh, there's a summary of volunteers and citizens. Just a reminder, this coming Saturday, it's gonna be awesome, beautiful, it's gonna be fun, and that again, so if you, if you're ready to volunteer for that, and pick up trash, whatever, whatever you can do, we want, we invite everybody, and, uh, you can, you can come out to it.
Thank you. My comment to you, fell out, deliberating, like, Dan said about the park survey just started to be online, that they take this by percentages, and the public into it is fifty percent. So it's really important that you go in and contribute to our parks and your vision. The best thing about it is everyone can have a say in it. So if you have time, or if you would just take time, please grab the survey. That concludes my comments. At this time, we are going to confirm, but before we do, we are going to do, going out, you know, we're going to the executive section, pursuant to the following decade, the executive to press the Stone Code, apparently set chapter five five nine, council will enter executive section to justify the fire and the fire. Second, five five one point oh eight seven, Urban Area Development Negotiations regarding Project Blue Flower, and B, second, five five one point oh seven one, council page from the attorney, regarding the contract for the interim city manager to be forehanded, and a contract with the developer of Rowley Ridge regarding land use and infrastructure. We will, when we observe, we will be going into another section for our executive section. So if you do not want, you can stay, you can visit, uh, whatever. It is now seven eighteen. I can have this, I can start making it, we are going to, I don't need to make the note. I don't need to mention, I would declare the city council at three, and we will go into executive section at seven twenty-five. Thank you. The regular meeting of the city council will begin before the, we are back in the at nineteen, ten and seventeen. Number eighteen, consider and take any action necessary as a result of the driver listed on the executive section. A, Project Blue Flower, triple D nine, contact him regarding this agenda item. B, full-time interim city manager contract. Is there a motion regarding this?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we approve the full-time interim city manager agreement and authorize the mayor pro temp to dispatch the said agreement to be effective April eleventh.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion with council? If all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Motion passed. Is that true?
Thank you. I voted.
Number six, contract with developer of Rowley Ridge regarding land use and infrastructure. And I checked, I can't make a motion, so I'm making a motion that Rowley Ridge bring a proposed EBJ development agreement to our next meeting. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Any discussion from council? All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's see, then we will go to item number nineteen. Consider and take any action necessary to designate Lane Jones as the media spokesperson for the mayor and the city council. In U S O this year, he will replace council member. Is there a motion regarding this?
There is a motion as such.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I assume there's no discussion. All of those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
We've got it. Motion passed unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
We are now officially adjourned. It is nine thirteen. Thank you very much for staying with.